I can't, because someone. Call the meeting to order, Councilwoman Margaret Horvath would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if we could have the roll.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Thomas Berry is absent. Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business, March 9th, 2016, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Is there support?
Supports.
Supported by Councilman Ray Muscat. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 23rd, 2016 meeting. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Ray Muscat.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move the council to approve the current claims, 6-1 through 6-17, as submitted.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I guess this question would go to Vince. On some of these, we had, like, I'm gonna just take one, for instance, 6-5, for the fire hydrant parts. It says amount, gives us about, but before the payment, amount is not put on there. Is that normal, or?
Councilman Dave Abdullah just asked about. Director MacCary.
My lawyer answered publicly.
Those items go into an inventory account?
And that's what the account number is there. Once they're used, we get a monthly report that says this particular department used this amount. And that's charged back to them. So the budget is technically in the department's line expense items, not in the inventory. This is an asset account, so.
Yeah, I just picked out one, because I came across it first, but there was other ones there. So it's the same.
Yeah, that's normal. It's nothing that we're doing anything new. It's been done for years.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I have a whole bunch of questions for the fire department. No, I'm just kidding. That's an inside joke.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is advertisement for bids.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer's request to advertise for bids to provide and install a new building automation system for city hall havoc system. This item was approved in the 2015-2016 Building Maintenance Department budget as outlined in 7A.
Is there support?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is appointment to the Board of Review from Mayor Dan Palatko.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I make a motion to concur with Mayor Palatko, the appointment of Charles Bonza, who resides at 5730 Silvery Lane, to the Board of Reviews, to fill a vacancy previously occupied by Honorable Dave Abdullah. This three-year term will expire in January 218.
Is there support for the motion? Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to thank council member for his service. It was, we weren't really sure on this, but Corporation Council believes that it's in the best interest, that there's no conflict of interest not to have a council member serve on the Board of Review. And we're very lucky to have Chuck Bonza, who has worked with the county treasurer's office for a long time, so we're being adequately served.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Mayor Palatko, annual marathon.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur, the request of Mayor Palatko to approve the, the request to facilitate the annual Martian Marathon on Saturday, April 9th, 2016, at 8:00 a.m. And that Police Chief Gavin has agreed to offer services as they are required.
Mr. Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, Chief Brogan, Fire Chief Brogan, normally we have both that approve the routes, and they have both approved those routes, so just wanted that to be duly noted, please.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Police Chief Lee Gavin, payment for Motorola annual service agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
I make a motion to approve, to concur with Chief Gavin, on the service agreement that covers the MCC 7500 radio consoles, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Is there support? Supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Treasurer John Riley, a resignation letter and request for appointment of a replacement trustee to the General Government Pension Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to receive note and file the, excuse me, Thomas Berry's resignation letter provided by the General Government Pension Board. I would also like to make a motion for council to nominate Ray Muscat, Councilman Ray Muscat, as the city council's appointment to the General Government Pension Board, as he has shown interest, and is outlined in 9B.
Let's do this. Let's take the resignation letter first, and any further discussion? Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I think it's very appropriate to offer our thanks to Councilman Berry for serving on the General Government Pension Board. We appreciate his input and his commitment to serve on the board. And whatever he chooses to do as he goes forward with an apparent new assignment and his work responsibility, we wish him very well.
Yeah, and I second that very much, so thank you.
I think we all agree.
Yep. And then, is it the council's pleasure that we have some discussion about who our nominee will be?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Let's take a vote on the, on the decision.
Yeah. In other words, at another time, so let's, all those in favor of the motion to accept the letter of resignation, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Is that the right one?
It should be the received note and file.
Received note and file.
Received note and file, yes.
The next item on the agenda is from Building and Engineering Director Mohammed Sobak, replacing the 2012 residential building code with the 2015 residential building codes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, Councilwoman, excuse me, Horvath.
I move that the council update the residential building codes to the 2015 codes, as adopted by the state on February 8th, 2016, as an outline in 9C.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it should indicate the Michigan residential building code, am I correct?
Well, and it also has, requires an ordinance amendment.
Oh, okay.
These, all these codes have to be done by, they're all in ordinances, just can't pass a resolution.
So direct Corporation Council?
And once we have the.
Lawyers, we gotta feed these lawyers. Councilwoman Horvath, do you favor that amendment?
Not really, but okay.
Mr. Chairman. Support? Mr. Chairman. Yes.
In this case, I think we only need one ordinance, because what they have done, they have.
Mohammed.
Oh, sorry. In this case, I think we only need one ordinance, because they have combined all the codes into one. So the Michigan residential code contains all the trades in it.
So it includes the plumbing, the?
All of them.
Okay.
So we have a very thick book.
Okay, good, then we'll talk about that.
So what are we doing here?
So we're gonna direct Corporation Council to finalize the update of the codes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Recreation Director Ken Gribble, request to prohibit selling by non-authorized persons at the 2016 Spirit Festival.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Kenneth Gribble's request for city council to adopt a resolution prohibiting the sale, the selling of products and/or services on the grounds of Canfield Community Center during the 2016 Spirit Festival, unless prior approval is granted by the Spirit Festival, the 2016 committee. This motion, I would like to also include, includes the area of Beach Daily Road that runs parallel with festival grounds, as outlined in 9D.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Just wanted to note that right now in Lansing House Bill 5103 and 5104, the aggressive solicitation law, hopefully if that continues to move forward, and I know that Michigan Municipal League has taken a position to support, that will help to minimize all this altogether, because there will be no solicitation allowed on public grounds, sidewalks, or even near ATMs for that matter. That's all I want to note.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is also from Recreation Director Ken Gribble, 2016 Spirit Festival liquor license application.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve, or authorize the director of Parks and Recreation to go into a, what's the word I want?
Agreement.
License application to sell beer and wine at the city's 2016 Spirit Festival, as outlined in 9E.
Is there support?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I know in the past, Councilman Berry has always voted no on this because of the liquor. We also have our insurance policy of a million dollars, and I did talk with our director, Gribble, and he explained to me what he's done, but I still don't know what that million-dollar policy cost us. And I don't know if corporate council needs to review that at all. And I know that having a festival without wine or beer or something like that doesn't attract very many people, but it kinda seems hard that we invite people to drive to our Spirit Festival, and then have alcohol, and then have them drive home, and that concerns me. That's just an opinion of mine, and.
Councilman Abdullah.
Actually, that was the question I had, is how much did that particular liquor liability insurance policy cost, but same question.
Director Ken Gribble.
I'm thinking a thousand dollars. That's what I see in here. Oh, why didn't the Ken was here?
The coverage we get, not only is liquor liability coverage, but we also get a general liability policy, which is required to get the liquor liability. If I go through a normal insurance agency local, they would charge us over, over $4,000 for that insurance. I get the liquor liability, million-dollar coverage, and also general liability, which I know we're self-insured, but we also have opportunity for greater exposure at a festival, that kind of people coming, the attendance we get. So both combined is around $3,200, and we get it through an agency that specializes in festivals.
Does corporate council look over that particular liability policy?
I basically worked with Mike Meldigan, who's our representative for insurance. I have not gone to our corporate council, if it's something that he feels would be beneficial, I have no objection to it.
Like an insurance policy, like if we get insurance for our autos, or? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have to add to the motion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have to add to the motion, appropriate information and signatures on one of the pages. See right here? Has to be filled out.
Oh, right, I'm 9E.
Authorizing the application from us. I need to add that. Okay? Well, there is no other page.
I just had a question for council. Do you think it'd be, oops, sorry. Do you think it'd be a good idea for you to review this, or you think it's sufficient enough what we have right now?
Well, since it's already reviewed by Mr. Meldigan, I would think that that normally would be, I'd be comfortable with that, since they would, they would have the carryover liability in this situation, namely MMR may would, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, anybody else have any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
There's two noes.
The next item on the agenda from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, emergency boiler replacement at Caroline Kennedy Library.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the payment of $16,442 to Johnson Controls for services, these were emergency services to repair the boiler at Caroline Kennedy Library. Funds are from the library repair and maintenance account, 738-931, as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, purchase of a 2016 Ford Transit van.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Joseph Kozinski.
Move, council concur, with the request of Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, for the purchase of a 2016 Ford Transit van, MR 148, in the amount of $38,146, and the requirements for competitive bidding has been granted under the Macomb County contract price. The acquisition will occur through Signature Ford, and the payment should be authorized upon receipt of the equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I will support that with a correction, if it's all right. The amount is $36,146.
Be thankful for your young eyes.
Extra $2,000.
I stand corrected.
The motion is supported. Any discussion? Councilman Abdullah.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's a multitude, and I know those are coming up, there's about three or four different trucks or vans, or whatever, that we're gonna be speaking of. My personal opinion, I'd like to make a motion that we maybe take this either to a study session, or just, just a little bit more information before we take a vote on this. You know, just to get a little bit more information, we prefer to make an official vote on this, in my opinion. I mean, there's three or four cars that we're gonna be spending money on, there's a cost of roughly, I mean, here, I can add them up here and all.
$120,000.
These are items, yeah, capital outlay, but why don't we do this? Why don't we vote on each one? And then, if it's the council's pleasure to send it to a study session, we can, but why don't we vote on each one?
Okay.
And, and, and there was some mention that we should all vote them on as a group, and I think we should take them one at a time.
I agree.
Yes.
Any, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Public Administrator Bill Zimmer in purchasing 2016 Ford Transit van, as outlined in 9G, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, purchase of a 2016 Ford F-150 pickup truck.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move, council concur, with William Zimmer, the Department of Public Works, for the purchase of a 2016 Ford F-160 XLT pickup truck, in the amount of $29,951. Satisfaction of the competitive bidding comes through Macomb County contract price bidding, and it will be delivered by Signature Ford, payment upon receipt of the equipment.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Support by Councilman Horvath. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
It's, you know, I don't wanna begrudge our director of vehicle, that's for sure. But a cost of $29,951 come out of water, I can't with good conscience vote yes on this. I mean, after we heard Plant Moran go over and over about our water funds needing to be where they should be, and then the next vehicle's at $19,000, that's $10,000 difference, almost $11,000 difference between the two trucks. And if it came out of a different fund, other than water, I would have no problem with it at all. But I can't see how we can look at our residents and say, we're gonna buy a truck that's gonna be used by the director for $29,000 after the water, we sat here and heard Plant Moran over and over about our water budget. If it came out of a different budget, I wouldn't have any problem at all, and I don't even know what vehicle this is gonna replace. So if Mr. Zimmer can say what we're gonna, it's gonna replace your van, your truck, and, and what is wrong with that truck, may I ask? If there's anything wrong with it?
It has 85,000 hard miles on it. It's been through the wringer. It's starting to require repairs, almost monthly, while I can still get some value as a trade-in. I think now is the time.
It's a 2008, correct?
2008.
I know there's a lot of Ford trucks out there that got a couple hundred thousand miles on them, and are running great, I just, I'm just having a hard time with coming out of water. That's all, I'm, I'm having a problem.
If I could, and I know if I have explained this to you earlier, but the group of vehicles that we, that I have put on the agenda, were approved in the budget, and we saved $18,400 from the approved amount in the budget to the actual purchase price. So I thought maybe the, the extra $2,800 that would be, that would require to get a four-wheel drive, to make my life easier, would be well-spent money.
I'm not gonna disagree with you on that at all. I know that you need a, a four-wheel drive truck. We discussed that. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, that you gotta have that kind of a vehicle for the type of work that's being done. It's just, I know it was budgeted, I wasn't on council when it was budgeted out of water for that. I, I'm just having a hard time saying from water, that's all.
Well, perhaps, maybe the savings of $340,000 in additional capital outlay purchases that were approved in that budget are not being used.
In other words, they, there's, there's additional money for capital outlay that's not being used.
Correct. $340,000 worth that we're, we're gonna hold off on.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I, I was just gonna say, of course, Councilman Muscat wasn't here at the time, but actually, these were approved in the budget. I mean, this is just, you know, formality here, because all these things were approved in the last budget. And, and you're saying, and I understand what you're saying about the water bills, and the amounts, and the costs, and everything, but this equipment is out of the water budget because it's used in the water department.
Well, it's used for everything else, too, though. I mean, I mean, he drives every pla, he drives other places, other than just water.
Yeah, but, well, yeah, you got a point, but I.
And that's, that's all I'm saying about it. I'm not, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Bill, at all, I just, you know, in good conscience, I just had to ask the questions. Okay, sorry.
Vince, or Controller MacCary, is there, is there, would we not wanna take this money out of the water budget? Would we wanna take it out of some other fund?
I would say no. I mean, that's where it was budgeted, that's where the money is, it's in the water budget.
Yeah, there isn't, there isn't money in the general fund, which I talked to you earlier, that we're gonna do the five-year plan, so either it's purchased out of water, which is predominantly what it's, his truck is being used for, or it's not gonna get purchased.
So that vehicle's just gonna get traded in, and we're not gonna use it in the city?
Correct.
Okay. So we're gonna get rid of the maintenance on it, and all of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to Director Zimmer today, which I really appreciated your time, and I know you're budgeting, and I respect what you're doing, where you scrutinize, you're very thorough, as if it was your own money, which I appreciate. I guess, as I had expressed to you, my concern was coming out of water budget, how do you charge back? And I guess it brings me back to fleet management, again, as a tool to help all of our departments that have any fleet vehicles, and accountability. So I, I had a question about the trade-in value. You had mentioned it would be 3,500, is that because of the wear and tear? Because the blue book is a little higher.
Yeah, I'm not positive on that number. I think it was 3,000 or 3,500.
Okay, 'cause as I had, I was very open and honest with you today, and told you I was on the fence, but I appreciated your time and the information you shared with me, and I am glad that you're not spending that $340,000 that was approved, so I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the savings that you've already had of 18,400. I'm just, I'm the same way, I am gonna vote yes, but I'm really, I don't like, I'm not so comfortable, to be honest, with taking it from the water budget, honestly.
Remember, there's other vehicles that are bought out of the general fund that are used in the water department.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's just a lot of the accountability issues here, and charging that back, which I know you do, Vince, by the way. You charge that back. But I think without fleet management, that's a tool that would help us with the accuracy, and also streamline the effort and the workload, because it's.
And everything's audited by Plant Moran.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I, I know.
Thanks for, for the information, Mr. Director Zimmer, because I, too, was on the fence, but your explanation is pretty good, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question.
Councilman Abdullah, go ahead.
Is there a reason as to, and I know we're coming up for, with another two or three more vehicles, so not to step ahead, but I'm just curious, as to the reasoning, and I know I sat down and talked to you, Bill, but what was the reasoning behind four or five, I think it's five vehicles, if I'm not mistaken, all together at the same time? You know, what was the reasoning for the date time?
Um, we're, some of this equipment requires a little bit of time to build to our specifications. The pickups, not, not so much. The Transit van and the small dump truck, a lot of times, when we send it to the manufacturer, it'll take some time for them to put it together to our specifications. Some of the larger dump trucks will take as much as nine years. I mean, nine years, nine months, that is a long time. Nine months to build.
216.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, why do we have, like, all five being replaced right around the same time? Why they?
Well, I have to do it within my, my fiscal year, so, and it's getting close, I mean, by the time we get these things ordered, and get them in, and get them paid for, it's gonna be close to July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Public Service Director Bill Zimmer, purchase of a 2016 Ford F-150 XL pickup truck.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer, and authorize the purchase of the 2016 Ford F-150 XL pickup truck. This is with Macomb County contract bid pricing, from Signature Ford, at the cost of $19,220. The vehicle will replace a truck that is no longer functioning and beyond repair, as outlined in 9I.
Second. Second by Councilman Ray Musket. Any discussion?
On receipt.
Payment upon receipt.
And payment upon receipt. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Public Service Director Zimmer, purchase of a 2016 Ford F-550 dump truck.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, Council, concur with Bill Zimmer, Public Service Administrator, on a request to purchase a 2016 Ford F-550 dump truck with the Macomb County contract bid pricing satisfying the competitive bid issue, delivery from Signature Ford in the amount of $66,235, and to be paid upon receipt of the equipment, all according to item 9J.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Public Service Director Bill Zimmer, sewer lining program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that, excuse me, Council concur with change order number 11 from Lonzo Lining for a total cost not to exceed $250,000, and this money is allocated from the 2015-16 Water Department budget. It is for sewer lining services at various locations throughout our city.
Second. Support by Councilman Ray Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from Ordnance Enforcement Director Jack McIntyre, fund transfer.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, Council, concur with the request of Ordnance Director Jack McIntyre for a fund transfer in the amount of $17,000 to accommodate sufficient funds to have a sufficient amount of revenues for the remainder of the year with regard to animal processing, all according to item 9L, over to Signature Director McIntyre.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, communication from Councilman Ray Musket, letter regarding labor negotiations.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move for the Dearborn Heights City Council to concur with this request and request the mayor to secure a labor attorney as a negotiator for the union contracts, which includes ASME, fire, and police contracts. And just let me add that the mayor and I had a discussion earlier today, and I think we both agreed that we should move this to a study session and maybe even a closed study session.
So your motion is to, for the council to concur and move this to a study session?
Yes.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Can we discuss if we're moving it to a council, or, yeah, I guess we can.
This involves labor negotiations, maybe it should be a closed session.
Well, a couple of things, you beat me to the draw, Ray, and that was, that's good, because I was going to ask, not that we hire somebody, because we've got good people, we've already got professionals, that that's what they do for us. So I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of hiring ABC Company, okay? What I, what I want and would like to see done is, first of all, you can't go into negotiations without any of us there, not us, I don't mean us, I mean, somebody representing the city. You can't go into negotiations without anybody there, except the negotiator. So I am looking at the negotiator being at every session, I don't care if it's five minutes or five hours, the negotiator should be there, along with our representatives and ASME, fire, whatever. That would be my take on this, but I certainly am not in favor of going out for a, another, they'd have to come under Gary anyway, because he's our main honcho over there, and he, you know, it'd have to be, he has to clear it and whatever, whatever he does to get new people under his umbrella. So that's some thoughts that you should, if we go into a study session, think about that.
Well, absolutely, that's what the study session will be for, and dealing with the contracts, I would think it would be something of a closed session, because there may be some thoughts that... No, they should be...
You think so?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think we're all on the same page. Back in January, I met with two women that, they just deal with labor, one of them is Southfield, the city of Southfield's negotiator, Suzanne Bartosz and Elizabeth Ray O'Donnell with Cummings McLaren.
Two attorneys.
So they're both legal attorneys specializing in labor matters.
But they're already, they're from a company that we already use.
Right, yeah, and they're coming through, and so Gary, yeah, they're going to flow through Gary, and so, but I caution everybody because, not, but I have to, I guess, signal the out, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, but it was brought to my attention, you have to be very careful about labor negotiations, and they really need to be, there's three things that the city is permitted to do in closed session. And one is lawsuits, the second is labor negotiations, and the third is purchasing or selling property, for obvious reasons. And I only want to caution, because there was a trustee or a councilwoman, I'm not sure if she was from Sterling Heights or Troy, and I don't know what they call, because not everybody, some are trustees and some others. And the Attorney General Office actually prosecuted, because we all have fiduciary responsibilities, and you don't want to say something in a public forum that is detrimental to a labor agreement. But there was a response, Councilwoman, that you sent, I don't know when you sent this, because, but it said something to the effect, "After the last negotiations that caused our city to close one day a week, and even after residents and those working at City Hall wanted to go back to five-day work week, council members discovered that they went to the mayor and they could not do that because the mayor had made it a part of the contract." Let me, let me indicate to you that there's a difference in the history. There's also some words being in here that, like, the council didn't know. And in fact, because as my memory tells me, Councilwoman Horvath, you were there, Councilwoman Badlow was there, I think...
Ken Barron.
Ken Barron was there. And in this very room, because we were under a crisis, our revenues had drastically been reduced, and we were on the path to an emergency manager or a court decree. And so, I, it's the only time I'm aware that this has happened, but we had all the ASME union members, and the ASME union allowed me to address them. And we found out that if we did layoffs, the bumping in City Hall would have been so outlandish that you would have had people who had never even, maybe walked by the department but had never done anything, and it would now have been the key person in these departments. So we went to all the union members and we said, "Look, this is very dire, we don't want to lay anybody off, but we have, we're going to go for a millage, but we need to have discipline from the employees, and we need to have a 10% reduction." And so it was negotiated that there was a change in hours. Now, what's important is, when you change hours, pay, those kind of things, and you've done a lot of labor work, there's a term for it, but it's change of work conditions, I think is what it's called, it can only be done via an agreement. And so consequently, there was already a contract in place, however, there was an addendum called a memo of understanding, MOU, and no one on the council was not aware of what was going on. In fact, all of us pretty much working together saved this city, or otherwise, we would have been, I don't know where we would be today. But that memo of understanding came back before this body and was adopted. So I don't know where you got your information from, it's inaccurate, I would ask that you send a correction, and the wording ought to probably go through the city attorney, but I just want to caution all of you that be real careful in, in labor negotiations, and at some future meeting, at mutually agreeable to chair scheduling, and our labor attorneys, I would want you to meet them, and we need to have some discussions as we enter in, because I think I've gotten three letters already, or maybe a fourth one, that they are interested in starting negotiations. I have not received any demands from any of the unions, so we're very early. So with that, I would, I would certainly look forward to having a meeting with the council and introducing our labor negotiators at that point. So passing the motion would be fine.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
When I first saw this item on the agenda and read through it, the overbearing thought that came to my mind is that labor negotiations is an absolute responsibility of the administration.
Correct.
Council does not get involved in it, except when the contract is ready to approve or deny. That's, that's the point at which we get involved with responsibilities that we have with regard to labor negotiations. We have no input, absolutely no responsibility for dictating as to whether we get lawyers or labor negotiators for the process. So I think when we come and meet to discuss that, that ought to be in the forefront of our minds, that we do not have any responsibility for labor negotiations.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket.
I agree with you, Councilman Kozinski, but there's other factors of why I wrote the letter, and that's, that's why I want to discuss them amongst ourselves, and I think that would be the best way to, I just wanted the door to be opened to our discussions, that's all. By no means am I forcing anyone's hand or want to force somebody's hand, but I think the door needed to be opened for us to discuss a few things.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends our regular agenda. Any announcements from anybody here at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
When the council considered item 9B, the resignation of Councilman Barry, was it the intention to entertain only the resignation, or is there an intention to nominate and name a person for the vacancy? I say that because as the chairman of the General Government Pension Board, it's critically important that we, we play with a full deck. There are times when people can't make the meetings, and the absence of one or two can put us in jeopardy. So I, I would suggest, if it's within the rule of order, to nominate a candidate to fill this vacancy.
And I, it's good to know that I did not know that, but I thought we'd spent a little time discussing amongst ourselves if who was interested in the position.
So you want to push us off onto the next session?
Yeah, we'll do it at the next session.
Thank you.
See who's interested.
I didn't know for sure whether there was an oversight or, because there was already a comment made about a, a proposal for a person to take that responsibility, and there may be others that will certainly fall on the table for consideration by the full council.
Yeah, it's important that we quickly discuss and quickly nominate somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I just had three notes that I wanted to share. I serve on the Michigan Municipal League Municipal Services Committee, and we take positions on behalf of the Michigan Municipal League on current legislation that is pending in Lansing, and this one I wanted to bring back and share as an update. Since the city of Dearborn Heights and city council supported the resolution to repeal the public act for fireworks, so currently, there are several bills that are forward right now, House Bill 5203, House Bill 5327, Senate Bill 698, for example. And all of these bills will help restore control back to local government, which is exactly what we were looking to have happen. So I wanted to just share that, that it is moving forward, including limiting fireworks to only being the Fourth of July. So that is some good news for local government, because it does tap into our resources and our manpower to even try to do enforcement with those challenges. But I also wanted to say I would love to organize an Action Day for council members that are interested to go to Lansing and share testimony on this, if they were interested. So that was the first announcement. The second announcement I have is from our Dearborn Heights Crime Prevention Bureau. Wanted to let folks know that they have set up the Justice Center, which is at 25637 Michigan Avenue, for you to complete your transactions for, the online transactions. You purchase something eBay or, you know, what's the one? I just totally forgot the name of the one.
Craigslist.
Amazon, Craigslist was the one.
Craigslist.
Because there's been a lot of concern with meeting somebody you don't know randomly here, there, wherever, but now you're able to do it at the safety and the security of the Justice Center in the lobby there. So that is good news for our residents to know, and also, the next community awareness program is going to be on March 23 at 6:30 PM, and that's a great opportunity for our residents to get updates on crime prevention, crime trends, and what you can do in your neighborhoods to partner with our police to keep your neighborhoods safe. And again, that is on Wednesday, the 23rd, at the Justice Center. The last thing I had is more of a question and a comment, and I am, I'm really pleased that our ordinance department has the two officers that are certified, by the way, and I thank them, because I know it wasn't an easy test, but, you know, the study session that was brought forward through a motion on September, excuse me, February 9, 2016, regular business meeting of our city council, we moved it to study session, and I really think the intent and the spirit of that motion was to hear from the vendors. Now, I know we'd rather, I would rather have it in-house, obviously, I'd also rather see our ordinance department have the staffing they need, which, and be beefed up, which I think through budget discussions, I hope to see that realized. But I also think the motion has not been fulfilled. I had some time I spent with, you know, the mayor of Warren, as well as some city council members from Southgate, who had quite a problem with rats, and of course, the presentation that we had, which I really appreciated that as well, and thank you, from the Michigan Department of Agriculture, code enforcement was the largest piece, the largest component. But the user odenticide's a very specialized field, and there was some information that they shared that I thought was really interesting. I would still like to see that motion fulfilled, to bring forward those vendors, to see if there's any resources they can help with our currently two officers that are certified, just because that was the intent of that motion that was made on February 9. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Abdallah.
I'd just like to go on record that I agree with Lisa. If nothing else, at least for informational purposes, I personally would also like to still hear what the three potential companies would have to say. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go with them or not go with them, but I think at the very minimal, for informational purposes, I personally would still like to hear them.
Mr. Chair, I agree also. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Okay, I have a couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, sometime in February, we put, we tabled the business license for High Grade. It never came back on the agenda, did it? Or did I miss that meeting?
No, it did not.
Okay, so we've still got this pending. What is, what is going on here? I mean, I don't know High Grade.
Great Strike House, yeah, I know the owners are one of them.
I don't care if you know them.
I quit eating there years ago.
I want to know why they're not getting their business license.
Right, they've been there a long time.
So this is something on the agenda that we have to address.
Absolutely.
Now, here's the zinger. Oh my, what you find out when you have a lot of time to do nothing. We have 16 officers retiring in '17, and we have, I believe, it's 16 in '18. They're all in the drop program, these are all drop officers. I don't know how this should work, but in my mind, I think we should be sitting down with the chief or whoever he appoints, and there's nothing we can do about this, but we need to know what the plan is, because that's 32 officers in the next two years. And I know we can hire 32 officers... And I know we can hire 32 officers, but what's the plan? Who's going to be promoted, and who's going to get, do this, and who's going to do? We need to talk to the department and find out what's going on.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. In fact, I talked to the chairman, because next meeting, what I'd like to do is present our five-year projection, and I asked all the department heads to put together a list of capital outlay over the next few years, because a lot of the buildings, there's problems in the buildings, there's difficulty with some of the equipment, and that knocked my socks off when the numbers came in. And I said, put it on the list, and I did not take or modify the list. I think you need to see the same thing they presented to me. So that's been done. But in connection with this planning, both in the police and in the fire department, those are issues. I'm not sure we can do that all in one night, but thoughts have already come into place in regards to that. We'd be more than happy to present it to the council, but your point is well taken. And I think that by looking at the five-year plan and looking at other components, this will generate ideas and thoughts, and I think it's going to give us all a to-do list in regards, because I'm hoping that as part of this process, some cost savings are going to come and be generated, as well as getting more efficient, and then us being able to put priorities on some things, and then over the next two, three, four, or five years, achieving that. So what, at the bottom line, what do we want the city of Dearborn Heights to look like in the year 2021 and 22? And that's where we should be moving towards.
I totally agree. And we have talked and discussed in regards to it, and we'd be happy to present that. We'll have a study session on that issue coming up. The mayor just mentioned that tonight to me.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
No, it's good, we're thinking alike.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I thought perhaps Councilwoman Horvath was kind of negotiating for a job as a policewoman.
Are you kidding?
I have a couple of things.
They'll send me down to the jail, and no one will ever find me.
The, I want to publicly comment and compliment the ordinance department for a significant accomplishment that occurred within a matter of the last week or so. He has cleaned up the scenery of a local area that looks much more attractive than it has been over the years. And I hope that people will continue to report directly to him with regard to the needs for ordinance enforcement. That's the most productive, most effective way that you can get things done through that ordinance department in short span of time. Also, we approved the Motorola thing, and when that came up in a previous meeting, I made some comments about a, about the prospects of having a building facilities manager, a person who can maybe help us reduce some of these expenses with regard to agreements that require a heavy outlay of cash. That person could be full-time, could be part-time, or on-call to share with us a background of electrical, mechanical, HVAC, and even security ideas. We have a lot of buildings here, and we have, we have to rely on, like it or not, on the companies that are servicing now. For example, I'll say it, but with tongue-in-cheek, Chief Gavin was trained to be a police officer first and a police chief. I wonder if we should rely on him for other responsibilities. He does it out of the goodness of his heart. DPW director also does some things that don't fall within the definition of his responsibilities. Why did he do it? He's trying to help the community out of the goodness of his heart. So when you look at the potential future budget mayor, see if we can fit somebody in to fill that responsibility. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything further?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick thing. I meant to, two. I know this has been in the paper, and I know it's been, everybody's talking about it, but. And it's mostly the senior citizens that are hit with this. If the IRS calls you, because they've called me, hang up, because what they're going to do, and the IRS never calls anybody, never.
That's correct.
But what they'll do is they'll tell you, you know, they're ready to pick you up and take you to jail if you don't return the call, and then they leave a phone number. You definitely don't want to dial that phone number. So just hang up the phone if it says the IRS, and you're not going to get in any trouble at all.
They'll send you a letter.
Yes, yes.
Oh, your brother, who was one of the top tax attorneys in the state, worked for a while for the IRS, and they send you a letter, and then they.
Mm-hmm. And the other thing that I had is, I had a lady that called me on a number of occasions about a tree, and she also called Bill. Tree limbs that were hanging over, and it wasn't her tree, and she's 80 years old, and she was going back and forth between Bill and I, and I think she even called the mayor's office. So one day, we got to talking, because Bill was going out there, and she started crying, and she's going back and forth, and then she said something about plumber. And I go, well, do you think you need a plumber? And she goes, you know, I think tree branches or tree whatevers. So I said, okay, I'm going to tell you who I use, but I am not telling you this as a city official. I'm telling you this as Mar Horvath, citizen of Dearborn Heights. Here's who I use. I've used them for 25 years, living in this house. They're great. I gave her the telephone number, the address, where to find them. Haven't heard from her since. Have you, Bill?
No.
There you go. So sometimes if you delve into their problem, you might be able to help them solve it, because she was calling on a regular, almost on a weekly basis. Yeah.
Like a plugged sewer line or something, as opposed to tree roots?
She called the plumber, and she called me back, and she said, you were right. It was tree, tree root. Yeah, yeah. So sometimes it helps to get in the conversation, and then you can help them.
People have a tendency to overuse their garbage disposals with vegetables. Worst thing you can put down your garbage disposal, they attract tree roots. It's amazing on how trees can find that vitamins in those vegetables, boy.
But you have to be sure that you do not represent the city.
Correct.
Because there's a liability there. Yeah, so.
Clerk, any update on the situation with High Grade Steakhouse, or we're waiting to hear?
Yes. There was one issue I wanted to investigate, and we were also in the process, Councilor Miyatki and I, of redirecting the business license renewals for those that come before council approval, namely those business establishments that have on-premises alcohol serving, which they are one of them. So that is part of the reason it was delayed. I spoke to the owner just this past week, and told him there's still some fulfillment issues. I advised him of that, and he's supposed to be in sometime this week, and I assured him that it would probably be on the next agenda when he fulfilled whatever needed to be done.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. This last week, actually on March 3, we lost a member of our community, Catherine Linda Garcia McDonald. Catherine had a PhD in English and served on the Westwood School Board for a long while, was an educator. She was also a former singer. I'm just reading from her obituary. She won so many battles but lost the war that started in 1959 against then juvenile diabetes. Her husband, Ed Garcia McDonald, has served on some of our boards. So please keep Ed Garcia McDonald and Catherine, and Ed's family, and your thoughts and your prayers.
Mr. Chairman, if you're done with the council, I just had a couple of comments.
Please go ahead.
We did get the update from the Michigan State Police, I think it's Lieutenant Matt Schnep on the grant for Hanover Street residents. So I'll just read the email he just recently sent. In fact, it was sent yesterday. This is his comment. I know I keep saying it is close, and that's the grant we're talking about, but it really is, with three dots. They sent me a draft of the approval letter last week in parentheses, because our office moved, and they wanted me to confirm the address in a parenthesis. It still had to go through their final approval process, and I haven't seen it yet, but should be here any time now. So we're, we feel, nothing's guaranteed, but we feel pretty good about the grant. Couple things. I liked the idea on a facility manager, when I was at Fordland, the guy that we used for a lot of the buildings was Dick Schaefer, who lived right around Outer Drive and Ford Road, and Dick, that was his expertise, and I'm sold on that concept. DTE has notified us, they're going to be doing tree trimming in a large part of Dearborn Heights. I've asked that they come out and do a TV show, so they're having their arborologists come out and do that. And I tried to look at the map and figure it out where it was they were doing it. It was difficult to determine, but there is going to be a significant tree trimming project by DTE this year in Dearborn Heights. Enterprise Fleet Management, I have been in conversations with them. I know we had a lot of discussion on vehicles, and that was recommended by Councilman Barry. One of the things I learned is a lot of our vehicles, they don't want to touch. There's a lot of liability associated with the kind of vehicles that we have, but we are talking to them, and they're, I've asked their company to make a proposal, and so we'll have, we'll take a look at that once we get it. And lastly, you know, we don't say enough about all our department heads, but they do a great job. They're very dedicated, and I must tell you that, you know, I call on them at all hours of the night, and they respond. They put in extra hours. They really do a good job. Our residents are very well-served, and I just want to say, as the mayor, thank you on behalf of all the residents. Thank you on my behalf for everything that you do. You do a great job.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Are DTE going to be going, like, into the backyards on the easements, to trim trees on the easements?
I don't know, because I, the person I talked with is, Madeline is our representative and representative for almost all Western Wayne County, and she sent a map through email. I've asked for further details, and that's when she said, I'll get the arborologist to come out, and when we meet with them, if, I'll be happy to send everybody an email and anybody that wants to attend. It was difficult to look at the map, because we even had it printed in color, and it was just very difficult to determine what the boundaries, but the boundaries, the answer, I don't know.
Because the reason I'm asking is because years ago, probably 1994, 95, they came through and went into people's yards and trimmed. They left me a horrendous mess, and I got on the phone, and I was screaming, bloody murder.
Yep.
And you've been to my house, I don't like that kind of stuff. And even in our streets, I hope they clean up after they, I mean, clean it, not just whisking a prayer here, okay?
Most, almost all residential real estate, they reserve an easement, and they subcontract it out, and the guys just come through, and they will sometimes not knock, or, and they'll, sometimes they'll send out like a robo-call. They'll come walking in your backyard, and they'll.
Well, regardless, they still needed to clean it up, regardless of it's an easement or not.
I'm with you, because about, this was maybe about 10 years ago, but there was a bad storm, and one of the wires in the backyard fell. And so they went through, and my neighbor had more shrubs in the trees and stuff than I did, and DTE cut all that, but they left it in my backyard, and they said they were going to come get it. And after two, three days, I said, this stuff has got to go. And I actually had to hire somebody to get rid of it, and this is the truth, point of my story. About six months later, there's a guy with all this equipment, and he knocks on the front door, and I said, can I help you? He says, I'm here to take the tree branches out. That was six months after the storm and the DTE cutting it, and I was like, who would have kept this shrub, all this junk in your backyard for six months?
We'd have called ordinance on you.
Yeah.
Years ago, or maybe in the last year, I should say, I remember Jeffrey Feiger coming out and saying he was filing a lawsuit over their practice in trimming the trees, because my experience has been similar, that they subcontracted out, and the people, they just run in and.
Correct.
Come out. So we'll mention that to Madeline Williams.
Yes.
With DTE, our liaison.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk?
I'd just like to talk a little bit about the election and the election process. Congratulations to the residents of Dearborn Heights. We had a showing of 31, nearly 31%. Thank you for coming out. I was surprised and pleasantly surprised, and let's continue to come out and vote on these very important issues. We did some things this election, some redesigning of, you might have saw your polls look a little different, and we did some different things here at City Hall at the close to, in anticipation of the presidential election. We tried them out. They worked, for the most part. We have determined some efficiencies, and on that note, I'd like to thank some people who really went out of their way to cooperate with me and helped us do this, and that's Ray Winawicki and his group, Bob Ankrapp, Jack McIntyre, Mike from the library, Mike McCaffrey, Ken Greibel, and of course, Chief Gavin. The other thing I'd like to say is, thank you, thank you, all poll workers. This was a difficult election to manage. There were two sets of ballots, as those of you who know went out there, they have never had to deal with two sets of ballots and two sets of ballot numbers in the computers. And as I say, it was a recipe for disaster, and it didn't happen. So kudos to those people, and please understand when you're voting in the future that these people, we train them for four, six hours, they do this three, four times a year. They're not experts. We make mistakes. We might have to take a little time with you. Try to keep your frustration levels down. They truly are working hard to help you. So, and it's a long day. They get there 6 o'clock at night, 6:00 in the morning, and they don't go home till 9:30. So if you see one of those poll workers and you know who they are, just say thank you to them. We appreciate them. And finally, I've already talked to Mr. Ankrapp, and we're really going to try to start a campaign to educate our voters before the presidential election. And what I mean by that is the absentee voter process, how to apply, make sure you're a registered voter before you come to the polls, make sure you are at the right poll, and all those things that will make this process go smoother and quicker with our end game in November. So with that being said, I think on our elections website, if you look at it, I think it's very informative. It'll tell you links to the Michigan State site, how do I determine if I'm registered, where do I vote, how do I apply for an absentee ballot, frequently asked questions, so that's a start. The other thing I want to ask, this is, this has got to be a joint effort, and anybody who is willing to have me at any of their organizations, civic organizations, block clubs, whatever, if you want to invite me, I'll come, and we'll do a talk on what you need to do before the election, and to make sure the deadlines, you have to be registered 30 days before the election. We had people that registered. We had people that registered ten days ago and came and wanted to vote. And that all takes time. So please, if, if you know of any group that, that is willing to listen to me, I am willing to come and make this work for all of our residents. So with that being said, I probably took up enough time. But thank you very much to all of you people who contributed this last election. It was probably one of the smoothest elections that we've had here, so, thanks again.
Any other announcements? Director McCafferty?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming programs. Wednesday, March 16th, at Carolyn Kennedy Library, from seven to eight-thirty PM. We will be hosting Kristy Robinett as she discusses Edgar Allan Poe. I'll learn about his life, death, and afterlife and how Poe became a medium for Kristy. For reminder, call, please register by calling 313-791-3800. The week after that, Wednesday, March 23rd, from seven to eight-thirty PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, join us as we learn about vegan protein. In this demo, vegan cook Michelle Brown will tell you about tofu, how to best prepare it, and various types of other protein that make great meals. That's all for now, thank you for your time and see you at the library.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I don't, why don't you mention the Nolan Cemetery?
I'll mention that probably another time. I'll mention it probably another time, I wanted to gather some things on that.
Well, be on the lookout, everybody. Mr. McCaffrey is heading up the crew and there's going to be some activity down at the Nolan Cemetery. I'm sure everybody knows where that's at. It's going to take a while. On Van Born, it's going to take a while and he's working very hard at it. He's got a team. I'm very excited about it because the Nolan Cemetery upgrade has been on the agenda for twenty-five years. And so he'll give you more information, but we might be asking you to go in your pockets. At least I will, not him, but I might. Okay, Mike.
It's a historic cemetery.
I'll support you on that.
Okay, well, thanks. I'm gathering some information. I didn't want to come out until I had a little bit more. But yeah, it's a pretty good chance, I think, that we will make it a historical site. I was a little hesitant at first, but yeah, there's some good chance that we can make some improvements there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, any members of the public, any comments?
No comments, hearing none.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.